Are we all set to start public hearing? Okay, all right, we're gonna start the public hearing. Barry. All right, 7:15 PM. This is a public hearing, an ordinance concerning amusement devices. We will begin with roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councillor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Councillor Cortez.
Here.
Councillor Fay.
Present.
Councillor McGinnis.
Present.
Councillor Pollan.
Here.
Councillor Walters.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winograd's absent sitting for him is Ms. Lazarus.
Present.
Councillor Zedanowicz.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff, and thank you, Ms. Lazarus, for sitting in. Appreciate it, and we will begin with a presentation by the town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone. For the record, Rick Ledwith, Town Manager. Tonight, I am presenting a proposed amendment to the Town Ordinance Concerning Amusement Devices, specifically Article 1 of Chapter 177, Section 177-2B. This amendment focuses on allowing pool tables and jukeboxes as accessory features in business establishments such as restaurants. Under our current ordinance, pool tables are only permitted as part of a designated indoor recreation or amusement facility. This limitation has proven restrictive, as town staff have received several inquiries over the past few years from commercial businesses interested in incorporating pool tables into their establishments to enhance the customer experience. We believe this amendment will promote greater flexibility for local businesses, enhance customer engagement and longer patron visits, and encourage economic growth through more attractive and dynamic business environments. Amenities like pool tables and jukeboxes can add value to a business and help differentiate our local commercial offerings. To ensure safety and maintain orderly use, the ordinance does include the following standards: no more than seven pool tables permitted per commercial establishment; no more than one amusement device per 700 square feet of gross floor area; and a minimum open area depth of four feet on any player's side to ensure proper circulation and safety. It's important to note that this amendment does not apply to businesses already classified as indoor recreation or amusement facilities, with the exception of nightclubs, dance halls, or dance clubs, which continue to be excluded from regulation under this section. In summary, this amendment responds to a demonstrated interest from our local business community, supports our economic development goals, provides a clear regulatory structure to ensure appropriate use, and town staff does recommend approval of this proposed amendment to Article 1 of Chapter 177, Section 177-2B. And this ordinance was reviewed by our Town Plan and Zoning Commission and approved unanimously on April 7th. So through you, Madam Mayor, I will pause there and turn it to you and the council to answer any questions that you would have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Are there any questions? This did go through CPED.
It went through, yes, Madam Mayor, went through community planning and economic development in two separate meetings.
Thank you. So I was gonna start with Tiffany, if you, Miss McGinnis? No, okay. Ms. Blanks.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, since I wasn't present for the CPED meeting, and maybe this was already addressed. Once the pool tables are installed and whatnot, and I'm just kinda falling back on my government experience, does the town, and I'm assuming that it does, have some type of visits, site visits, or something throughout the period, just to make sure that businesses are following protocol?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Councillor Blanks. So yes, our zoning enforcement department would be responsible for periodically auditing the restaurant where a pool table may be located to ensure that it's working as intended.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any. All right, so, Mr. Davidoff, Mr. Clerk, have you received any written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that there's nobody signed up to speak. If not, is there anybody here that would like to speak on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none. Again, one more round. Any questions from the council? Okay, very good. And Mr. Ledwith did mention this, although I have a letter dated April 8th, 2025, from Town Plan and Zoning Commission recommending approval. And if there is nothing further, then this public hearing is closed, and we will begin the town council meeting in just about seven, or eight minutes. Thank you. All right. I am calling the Tuesday. Good evening, everybody. I am calling the Tuesday, May 13th, Town Council Meeting to Order. It is 7:30 PM, and we will begin with roll call, Mr. Davidoff. Oh, Pledge of Allegiance, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Now, roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councillor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Councillor Cortez.
Here.
Councillor Fay.
Present.
Councillor McGinnis.
Present.
Councillor Pollan.
Here.
Councillor Walters.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winograd is absent sitting in on item number 6A only. Is Ms. Lazarus?
Present.
And Councillor Zedanowicz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Okay, so we will begin with Proclamations. May is a busy month. I have several, and I will read through them quickly, but I think it's important to think about some of these items when we are going about our everyday lives, the month of May. Frontline Worker Appreciation Month is May, month of May. This is frontline, whereas our frontline workers are vital to local government worldwide and stand as the oldest among public servants. And whereas frontline workers are the builders of our community, exercising curiosity, compassion, courage, creativity to provide essential services that ensure the safety, health, and education of our residents. And whereas firefighters respond to an estimated 36 million emergency calls each year, over 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers nationwide work tirelessly to uphold the law and ensure public safety, and emergency medical EMS personnel respond to more than 240 million calls annually. And whereas teachers dedicate their careers to shaping the future of our communities with over 3.7 million educators in the U.S. providing knowledge and guidance to our youth. And whereas frontline workers embody the essence of builders, flexible thinkers, and constructive problem solvers, who respect the dignity of all people by dedicating themselves to overcoming challenges and uniting communities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize May Frontline Workers' Month and further extend appreciation to our own West Hartford frontline workers and in our entire community for the vital services they perform and their unwavering dedication. And I know I join all of you in understanding how important our frontline workers are to the quality of life and the safety of our community. So, thank you. The next is Municipal Clerks Week. Where's the Office of the Town Clerk? Mr. Davidoff? Would you like to come up to the podium? All right, where's the Office of the Town Clerk? A time-honored institution vital to local government worldwide, stand as the oldest among public servants. The Office of the Town Clerk is the oldest among the public servants, acting as a professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and government agencies at various levels. The Office of the Town Clerk upholds neutrality and impartiality, providing equal service to all. And whereas serving is an essential information center on local government functions and community matters, the Office of the Town Clerk embodies a commitment to keeping the community well-informed. And whereas through active participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and professional organization meetings, the Office of the Town Clerk consistently endeavors to enhance administrative practices. And whereas the Office of the Town Clerk's significant contributions are deserving of recognition, we extend heartfelt appreciation to our Town Clerk's office and the dedicated staff for their invaluable services. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize the week of 4 through 10, May 4 through 10, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Office of the Town Clerk and the entire office staff for vital services they perform and their unwavering dedication to our community. And our Town Clerk, Mr. Leon Davidoff, was the recipient of the Town Clerk Award? Was honorable. And it, out of three, how many Town Clerks? General.
General Code, 300 were.
300 nationwide, which is amazing. So let's give Mr. Davidoff a hand. It's a man. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. We're getting there. Okay. Mental Health Awareness Month, and none of these in the RNNA order, that one is more important than the other, but. Whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and West Hartford is committed to increasing awareness about the vital role mental health plays in our overall health and well-being, providing resources and information to support individuals and communities who may need mental health support. And whereas National Prevention Week is May 12th through May 18th, and we acknowledge this week as a celebration of possibility to showcase communities coming together to celebrate the opportunities for brighter futures that exist thanks to the ongoing work of prevention and raising awareness about the importance of substance misuse prevention and positive mental health. And whereas the town of West Hartford is proud to be working toward recognition as a recovery-friendly community by supporting residents who are in recovery from a substance misuse disorder and/or mental health disorder, raising awareness of the nature of such conditions, promoting health and recovery by reducing stigma and discrimination, and improving the environmental factors necessary for recoveries to flourish. And whereas the town of West Hartford, through the West Hartford Prevention Commission, the Prevention Partnership, town departments including leisure services, the library, the police, fire departments, senior centers, social services, West Hartford Bloomfield Health District, West Hartford Community Interactive, and the Board of Education, and the Bridge Family Center, as the Town's Youth Services Bureau, along with many other individuals, organizations, and the general public, will continue to collaborate on year-round prevention efforts. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize Mental Health Awareness Month and the week of May 12th through 18th as Prevention Week, and support the efforts of our local government, community groups, and the residents to increase public awareness about the importance of substance use prevention and Positive Mental Health Month and throughout the year. So, thank you. Extremely, it's very important, and if you know anybody that needs some support, please, please reach out. And the last that I have, and I think there are more that we did not include, but Asian American Pacific Islander Month. This is, whereas it is recognized as AAPI Month. AAPI have had a profound effect, a profound and ancient heritage that has significantly influenced the history of the United States, and their lives have been deeply impacted by pivotal moments in the nation's past. And whereas the United States is home to over 20 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, whose daily contributions enhance the vibrancy, prosperity, and security of America. And whereas the month of May is designated as Asian American Pacific Islander Month, according to the Federal Asian Pacific American Council, with the theme "A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience," honoring the and Resilience," honoring the hard work of AAPI leaders who have built a foundation for future generations. Whereas every May during Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we should recognize and celebrate the many significant cultural, historical, and economic contributions Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made in West Hartford and in Connecticut and beyond. Whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the valuable contributions, rich heritage, enduring legacies of AAPI, and honor and support the various events and activities that celebrate the culture and achievements within the West Hartford community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council of West Hartford and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby proclaim the month of May National Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we are grateful for the offerings that we will be enjoying, and some of those will be mentioned in announcements later. Any other? That's the proclamations, okay. We will move on now to the public forum. Mr. Dodge, could you check? Empty, okay. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on anything on the agenda that wasn't public, subject to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. We will now go to consent calendar. Ms. Polin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that items 5A through 5C, 7B and 10A are placed on the consent calendar.
Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection. The items are placed on consent. Ms. Polin.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we will go to 6A. Ms. Polin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance concerning amusement devices.
Second. And we have, were distributed a substitute ordinance. Mr. Dodge, is there anything you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, before the Town Council is a substitute ordinance, this corrects a typographical error that was in the initial version of the ordinance. You'll note that in Section 1 and Section 2 of the original ordinance, there's an incorrect reference to Article 5 of our town code. This changes that to be accurate, where it would be Article 1 in Section 1 and Article 4 in Section 2, which is reflected in the substitute before you. Madam Mayor, when you move this ordinance, you'll simply move the substitute ordinance. Because the change does not change the substance or effect of the ordinance, it does not require rep publication or rehear, or, excuse me, or rehearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. We did move and second, so should we move it again with the wording of the substitute ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Polin.
Thank you. I move to adopt the substitute ordinance concerning amusement devices.
Second. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. This was the subject of a public hearing right before this council meeting, so I don't know if there are any comments or questions before we do a roll call vote? Anybody? Okay. Mr. Ledwith, maybe just could, two sentences, just summarize what this is.
Sure, Madam Mayor. This ordinance proposes an amendment to the town zoning regulations to allow pool tables and jukeboxes as a permitted accessory use within restaurants. This change is intended to reflect evolving trends in dining and entertainment, and to support local businesses to enhance their customer experience in a responsible and regulated manner. The amendment includes appropriate limitations to ensure that pool tables remain an ancillary feature and do not alter the primary use of the establishment as a restaurant.
Thank you again, Mr. Ledwith.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments, any questions? All right. Seeing none. And I just want to thank Ms. Lazarus again for filling in. We will go to roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Blanks.
Yes.
Mayor Cantor.
Yes.
Councillor Cortez.
Yes.
Councillor Fay.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Councillor Polin.
Yes.
Councillor Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Lazarus for Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Yes.
Councillor Zedanowitz.
Yes.
Casas Unitedly 90.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. And thank you, Ms. Lazarus. You're welcome to sit at the table, but I understand if you would like to also. Two other things. Mr. Dodge.
Madam Mayor, if I could take leave for a moment, I unfortunately need to leave to get back to my day job, which does sometimes become an evening job. But I have every confidence from a procedural level that you can work your way through the rest of the council agenda. Attorney Verano is in the audience should disaster strike, but congratulations on the adoption of the amusement ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge, and I hope you are not, I hope you get some sleep. Okay. All right. So now we are at number seven, new business. Ms. Polin.
Item 7A, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we receive the application referred to Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Design Review Advisory Commission, Capital Region Council of Governments, and the town of Bloomfield for their required review and set for public hearing on June 24, 2025 at 6:30 PM.
And this is, do you want to just read?
And this is the application of Oceanport Realty Capital LLC and OP 160 Simsbury LLC, contract purchaser of 160 Simsbury Road, for an amendment to existing Special Development District 106, currently known as Hoffman Summerwood and Henley Woods. The application seeks to amend the approximately 9.9 acre Summerwood parcel at 160 Simsbury Road to allow a parking expansion, drainage, and site-related improvements to support a change of use of the existing building from age-restricted multifamily to non-age-restricted multifamily housing units.
Is there any objection? Okay. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. And we will go now, just sliding through, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin the Town Manager's Report with a summary of upcoming council business. We do have a Finance and Administration Committee meeting on May 15th at 6:00 PM this Thursday. That will be virtual. We have a Human and Community Services Committee meeting on Monday, May 19th at 6:00 PM. That meeting will be virtual as well, followed by a Community Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting on May 21st at 8:00 AM, and that meeting will be virtual too. Our next Town Council meeting is Tuesday, May 27th at 7:30 PM, right here in council chambers. I want to give a quick update on West Hartford Center construction. New signage has been installed at the project site to help keep the community informed during construction. The sign displays a conceptual design with a QR code that links directly to project updates, making it easy for passerby to stay informed on the go. Additionally, the contractor has installed signage indicating pedestrian crosswalk routes and business access. The first round of roads resurfacing began this week. Milling operations on Kane Street and Troutbrook Drive were successfully completed during the past two nights to minimize traffic impact. Tonight, we expect to complete the milling of Raymond Road from Farmington Avenue to Boulevard. Tomorrow at 7:00 AM, a second milling crew will arrive to complete the remaining section from Boulevard to Park Road. Once that is finished, the crew will move to Mountain Road and Cedric Road to continue work for the rest of the day. Row closures and detours will be in place during active construction. Motors are advised to seek alternate routes. Drivers should use caution while traveling on the milled surface and be alert for raised manhole structures. Paving is scheduled to begin Sunday night, May 18th, on Kane Street, and continue in the order of the streets listed below. Weather permitting, the work is expected to be completed in early June. So we have Kane Street, Prospect to Oakwood, night work; Troutbrook Drive, Boulevard to Park, night work; Raymond Road, Farmington to Burr, night work; Raymond Road, Burr to Park; Mountain Road, Boulevard to Buena Vista; Cedric Road, Buena Vista to Ridgewood; and then Asylum Avenue, Troutbrook to Steel Road. The Department of Public Works will hold its annual open house on this Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 AM till 12:00 noon at its facility on Brixton Street in observance of National Public Works Week, and this event will be held rain or shine. At the event, children can sit in big trucks while adults can get all of their recycling questions answered and learn more about Weha Parking Finder and the food scrap recycling program. West Hartford DPW is joining 34 other communities in Connecticut to fill a truck with non-perishable food in support of local food pantries. Join us for a community conversation on May 19th and 20th about the town of West Hartford's Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation and transition plan process. Valerie Fletcher with the Institute for Human Center Design will give a summary and host a listening session to gather feedback on the experiences and needs of people with disabilities in relation to town facilities and programs. The May 19th session will be held at Town Hall in Room 314 from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and the May 20th session will be held at Elmwood Community Center from 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM. Residents may also sign up for a brief virtual or private in-person conversation with Valerie on May 20th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Individuals with disabilities, their families, advocates, and anyone interested in creating a more inclusive community for West Hartford are invited to attend. And that concludes my Town Manager's Report. The remainder of the report is online for folks to download and read at their pleasure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to answer any questions on those items or anything else that the council may have questions on.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. I think we're going to be hearing about a lot, there's a lot of construction. It's a short construction season in Connecticut, and we make the most of it, and there will be a lot of detours. And I know, I know it can be inconvenient, but we do have a lot of work to do in a short period of time. I was wondering if there was anything Vision Zero related that you could just kind of share, just to keep us up to date on?
So, we are, thank you, Madam Mayor, we are presently working on, we shared with our CPEG Committee recently, our Quick Build supplement. And our engineers and public works departments are working feverishly to begin the first set of Quick Build projects we're hoping to roll out within the next couple of weeks. In addition, our Public Relations Department, in coordination with our Public Works Department, have, I should have brought copies of them, but we've created new signs for our Vision Zero projects with QR codes on those signs. So when we put up a new raised sidewalk, for example, we'll put up a sign identifying this project as a Vision Zero project, and then residents will be able to click the QR code and learn more about what that particular project does in terms of keeping our community safe. And then we've also created another sign where we will, where we'll be, we'll put up the sign in advance of a project coming. So, it'll say, "New Vision Zero Project Coming at This Site" with a QR code identifying what Quick Build project will be coming at that particular site. So, have a lot more to share at our next meeting in terms of hard dates for the Quick Builds.
Thank you. And some are, I think, equipment-dependent, so, right?
Yep. So we've ordered hundreds of delineators, the white posts that we will be using for the Quick Build. So we have some in stock, but the remainder are en route as we speak.
And just one follow, the Quick Builds that were done prior to winter this year, are those going to have QR codes too, or those are?
Yep. So we are, yep, so we have, for example, we have three raised crosswalks around town. We'll get signs there, and then, you know, for the newer ones as well. And then we'll put them up at a couple different locations for our rapid flashing beacon lights as well. So, we'll see a lot more with our logo on that sign. It's coming soon. Yep. So John, talked to the Director of Public Works. He's, with all the construction happening right around us, he had some signs to get done and completed for this project starting tonight, but they'll turn their attention to designing those new signs tomorrow.
And I will just add that it's really incredible that they're hosting open national, with National Public Works Week, having that open house in addition to everything, they're incredibly busy, so.
They are.
We're very grateful for, and we know as, I don't know if Barry will say anything, wants to say anything, but our Public Works Department works really, really, really hard. Anyway, so I don't know if you want to say anything, Barry? Carol?
Thank, thank you, and through you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I don't have much to say other than two things. I live adjacent to Troutbrook, and it was a little loud last night, but I'm looking forward to a new smoothly paved street. And the other thing that I will acknowledge is that I've never seen people drive so slowly on that section of Troutbrook, and it's a thing of beauty. Maybe we need to put a little, you know, put a little slalom in there to get people to slow down. But in any case, no. Regarding Public Works, they do a fantastic job, and Director John Phillips deserves all the kudos that he can get for, for, you know, the amount of work that they are given to the conscious that he has. I don't know if y'all just saw where they transplanted the evergreens that were used for the holiday season. They're now planted out at Westmore Park rather than just throwing them away, which is what most places would do, and repurchase next year. So, you know, they do a great job, and he thinks very intentionally about everything, and I can't say enough good things about him and the department.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Ms. Blanks had a question.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. And I too appreciate the signs that were posted because it was like, oh, they're starting to do the work, and kind of makes you be on the alert and slow down, for those who don't like to slow down. But more importantly, Mr. Town Manager, what time does the night work begin on Kane Street? Because like Barry, I'm like listening out for the, so I'm just curious. Can you tell?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it does start at 8:00 PM. Yep, so it'll be beginning shortly. Four minutes. Yep.
Okay, so don't go home that way. All right. Anything else for the Town Manager? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ledwith. Corporation Counsel Report.
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. No report. Any questions for Corporation Counsel's office? Thank you for being here. All right. Then I will quickly go through some announcements. It is a busy time, so unveiling of the Sarah Whitman Hooker's grave marker. This is an installation of the namesake in the Center Cemetery on North Main Street, led by Chapter Region Allison Gomes. The ceremony includes attendance by chapter members and special guests who have been integral to this project. This is the chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Sarah Whitman Hooker. Congratulations to Hall High School's Chloe Madrick. She's only one of 23 high school musicians in the United States to be picked for this year's Carnegie Hall NYO Jazz Concert and Tour. Madrick, who plays the tenor saxophone, said she was inspired and motivated to be the best musician she could possibly be after attending Hall High School's annual pops and jazz concert in 5th grade. Congratulations Chloe on this prestigious achievement. We're really, really proud of her. Senior date will be held tomorrow, 9:30 till 12:30, at the Elmwood Community Center. The event is free and co-sponsored by Senator Derek Slapp and the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. Over 40 vendors are featured, including senior service providers, healthcare professionals, senior citizen advisory commission members, West Hartford Police, Fire, Social Services Departments, CERT members, community advocates. Free continental breakfast and free prevention health screenings are available to all who attend. West Hartford Garden Club's annual spring sale will take place on Saturday, May 17th, 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM at the Noah Webster House. This is house plants, perennials, wintered, over favorites like dahlias and unusual vegetable and tomato seeds, started by members and held rain or shine. And they have a website, a link on here. West Hartford Symphony Pops Concert will also take place on May 17th at 7:00 PM at Northwest Catholic High School. It may recommend a reservation. You can call 860-521-4362, and the admission is $20 general and 15 for senior and students. Children under 12 are free. The Lily Bridge Ensemble Concert will be also taking place on Saturday, May 17th, at 3:00 PM. This is an internationally acclaimed violinist, Rachel Riger, and pianist Madeleine Forte, a duo whose performances have captivated audience on five continents. Concert is open to all. Seating is first come, first served. This is at Westminster Presbyterian Church. Weha will Health and Wellness Fair will take place on May 20th in Blueback Square. Will be held from 12 to 3:00. Everyone is invited to attend. It's rain or shine, oh no, the rain date actually is-